Call this meeting to order. All the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson. Koho Kels. Ben.
Here.
Helsa Beck. Williamson. Here. Ings.
Here.
Okay, uh, number two, approval of agenda.
Any change here, Your Honor?
There are no changes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ings.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, hearing to determine if a dog within the city limits of Boone, Iowa is a vicious animal as defined by City Ordinance fifty-six point oh five.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, on the agenda, um, I'm here on a hearing regarding a determination for a vicious animal. Wish I was here on something else. I think first I just wanted to, uh, refresh your memories on what it takes to make a determination about a vicious animal. So, chapter or ordinance, uh, chapter fifty-six. Uh, essentially, there's two things that you're looking for is that there, uh, was a animal at large. And that there was a bite that was unprovoked. So if you're kind of looking at two different elements there, at-large, unprovoked bite. I'll just jump right into it. This is an incident, uh, it's an unfortunate incident. Occurred back on August eighteenth over in West Boone. The location of the incidents, uh, incident was technically six oh five West Fourth Street. The, I, I will let the council know that the owners of, uh, the animal are here tonight, uh, they're in the back row. Uh, I think that they probably would like to be given an opportunity to speak, but I'll, I'll get through my portion here first. The facts of this situation are based upon the information that I've been presented, something along these lines. A lady was visiting her dad's house in West Boone. She lives over on Garst, uh, Garst here. She was visiting her dad in West Boone at the six oh five West Fourth Street. I believe she was, he was helping her, uh, change a taillight on her car. At some point, she looks out the window and she sees a dog that's running around the neighborhood. It caused her concern because there was a kids outside playing. She's had elderly people that were walking, doing things like that. She thought maybe it was the neighbor's dog. So she went outside and was able to either call the dog in or somehow the dog, uh, allowed her to approach it. Uh, she checked its tag. There was a number on the tag. She tried calling the number. She spoke with somebody, but this, uh, whoever she spoke with was not the owner. They said that, uh, the owner's number might have changed or, or something like that. So she spoke with somebody who wasn't the owner. She was able to get a leash on the dog. She thought that maybe it might have been one of the neighbor's dogs. I think she was under the impression that she was going to maybe try to get this dog, uh, over to the neighbor's house. But prior to that happening, um, her, her daughter, the three-year-old, uh, approached mom. And when the little girl got within, um, you know, a few feet by, by her report, uh, the dog lunged at her. And latched on to her right cheek and neck area and took the girl to the ground. Uh, and what only could be described to me as probably a parent's worst nightmare, she could not get this dog off.
Can I ask what kind of dog?
Yeah.
What was it?
I believe it's an Australian shepherd.
Okay.
On the report, it was listed as an Aussie, but I believe I've been told that it's an Australian shepherd.
Thank you.
Mom has to get down, uh, I, I believe she described it as somehow trying to push her knee on it or something like that to eventually. And then grandpa dad came out of the house and assisted her with eventually getting the dog off. Dad, grandpa contained the dog while she called, uh, nine-one-one. The girl suffered what could only be described as very serious injuries. She was taken to the hospital. Uh, Humane Society, uh, I think law enforcement paramedics responded. Humane Society impounded the dog. And here we are with a vicious dog extermination. I'm going to pass out the pictures. There's two pictures, one that shows the injury to the cheek, one that shows the injury to the neck. Um, I think we have one set for this side, one set for that side. I mean, I, I won't tell you, these are graphic, so I think it's only fair to.
Orness.
So, yeah. You guys kind of. So to make this determination, again, you have to establish that the dog was at-large and that there was an unprovoked bite. Clearly, the dog was at-large. The address for the owners is listed on Washington Street. This incident heard, occurred on West Fourth Street. Um, I don't, I don't know if there's any dispute that this dog was not the, the property that should have been contained. Provocation. I don't know exactly what everybody defines provocation at, uh, trespassing on somebody's property, maybe attacking an owner, striking fear in an animal. Little girl walking up to her mom, dog lunges at her. Which leads to the other, um, important part of this that, that I've been told is, uh, an attack to a head or a neck of a person. Uh, it's very concerning. Those are the areas that, uh, are most deadly to somebody. I think if you saw the picture with the injury to the neck, a doctor, um, I don't know exactly where everything's located in the neck. I don't know how that bite did not, uh, hit that main artery through there. That, that could, uh, lead to even worse situation that we're in right now. So I submit to you that, uh, the, the elements of this are met. We have a dog that was running at-large. It has a history of being at-large. Vanessa, with the Animal Control, Humane Society, um, do you know roughly how many? There's been a history of this dog being at-large, right?
Correct.
I'll leave it up to you to decide, uh, whether you think that, uh, the little girl walking up to mom was some type of provocation. I've been around a lot of dogs, uh, I'm not sure that I've seen, uh, something that's been described as, as what's described in the reports as a, a latching on and a taking down and a refusal to let go, um, of a person. I know that this is the stuff that you guys want me up here, uh, putting on your, on your desk, but we're here to ask you to make a determination of whether or not you feel that this satisfies elements of a vicious dog. I'm happy to take any questions. Vanessa's here, she can answer more questions, but those are the, the facts as, as I know them, and, uh, I'll turn it over to you.
Vanessa, how many times have you dealt with this dog?
Uh, we've had the dog in our custody six times.
And it was loose? I mean, was that, it was on the run?
Or what's your judgment on this? I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
That's okay, it's part of my job, right? I don't like seeing you guys on these matters either. Um, in a case like this, I understand that the dog is good with humans. He's been running at-large multiple times, never bit anybody that we're aware of. This is the first fight, however, this is very serious. The dog got the child down on the ground and continued to shake her while holding on to her neck. That's why it's ripped. That's a problem for me. I wouldn't want the dog living next door. Sorry, I forgot my inhaler and I just ran up those stairs. But basically, you know, my job is looking out for the safety of humans and you never know when a little kid will be outside if the dog is running loose. Um, so that's a big concern for me as well as, I'm sure the owners are in here somewhere. They need to know the dog is not doing well at the shelter. Um, the dog seems to be getting pretty aggressive with other dogs when they're walking past his kennel or he's walking past theirs. And we're just so full right now. I don't have a room to put him away by himself. You know, again, it's not fun holding dogs for hearings like this or for the appeal process and things like this. Only the second time I've had to stand before you in eight years, um, that we had to go through the whole process rather than the owners realizing this dog is scary. Um, and sometimes they need put down from behavior. I agree that that's the case with this case right now.
Any other questions for Vanessa?
So you don't feel like there's really a way to redeem?
So usually in a case like this, and we did have the original owner reach out to us, offer to pay the fees, let's get this dog into a rescue. I work with a lot of rescues, they won't take dogs with bite histories is the problem. So there's just so many dogs nationwide right now, every shelter is full, that it really is overly full. You know, maybe somewhere in a perfect world, yes, there'd be rehabilitation for the dog, but there's just so many that don't have bite cases, so I need to focus on those ones.
I think the biggest concern that I have with this is had that there not been adults there? This could have been way worse to pull him off once he latched on.
Any other questions for Vanessa? So we'll allow the, an opportunity for the owners to, uh, speak. You can come up to the, the gate, please, um, and state your name and address when you come up.
Where Glasgow.
Chelsea Starks, my address is five two two, Washington.
Okay.
Actually, no, my dog don't bite like that, but he don't go on a leash.
He's never been around a leash, no. He's always just standing there and if he.
Gets.
I don't know what, because that's for the lady to take him and put him on a leash, but maybe, I'm not saying what he did was right because it wasn't.
But actually, I have control, I mean, he got out, he's, I, I, I fixed every time he gets out, I fixed where he gets out and he's crafting, I mean, really.
He's just hard for me to imagine. It's hard for me to imagine if something like that because I'm not trying to, I go like this and he will come cuddle. Like he's trained to cuddle. I don't imagine my dog would do anything like that.
Um, I was right there on, on my pedal, like, when the animal control and the police were pulling up there. I mean, I was looking, I, I knew he got out and I was right there when it happened, pretty much, uh, I mean, and.
So I think he deserves to die.
No.
I know this is bad and it was horrible, but maybe we can, like, get him a rescue or somewhere, like, I've called a couple places in Texas where a previous owner lives and maybe we'll have to work with them. So I don't know if maybe getting in contact or, or I don't know what the decision's gonna be, but I just want you guys to know, I love my dog, it's like my child.
I guess I want to say it's, it's sad for all of us. This is not an easy decision and, and, you know, I'm sorry, kind of sometimes what we have to do, but I think we have to look at the safety. And I know you wish this wouldn't happen and, and so do we. But I think we have to make sure that.
Bottom line.
Everybody's safe.
He could have called Animal Control, we put him on a leash, she's not trained to do that.
Yes.
Oh, he was out of his element and he was scared probably and.
Yeah, now we have a bad situation.
Thank you very much. Great, back to you, any concluding conclusions?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I understand, uh, I, I understand that, uh, pets, dogs are, are like family members. Uh, this little girl's someone's family member as well. Uh, she wasn't at-large. She didn't do anything to warrant this type of attack. It, it, it is an unfortunate situation, but, uh, I'm here. I think Vanessa brought this, uh, to me, to present to you guys. Because you have to look out for the safety of the community. For, for whatever reason, uh, the lady shouldn't have put him on a leash. I, I, she was concerned about a dog running at-large in the neighborhood full of kids. I don't know, I probably would have tried to do the same thing. Who would have known that doing so would trigger a dog to latch on to a little girl and not let go? Uh, this is not a bite where a dog got scared and defensive and, and snapped at somebody and let go. That was a, a dog that latched on to, uh, uh, a potentially lethal area of a little girl's neck and refused to let go. It's, uh, it's an, it's unfortunate thing, but ultimately you guys can make the decision. I would submit to you that it's definitely one percent meets the definition of a vicious animal. The decision to make.
Hey, counsel.
I think we'd be remiss to not do something.
Have a motion?
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion that we, uh, determine this is a vicious animal and what else do you want? And we'll proceed, okay?
Second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ings.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Kelly.
Fortunately, yes.
Thank you.
But if there is a appeal process, right? That they can do.
Yep.
Um, I am going to, to move, come back to the, uh, proceedings events. Um, C, public hearing for the consideration of a voluntary annexation of property located at Parcel C in the southwest quarter of section thirty-five. Township eighty-four north range twenty-six west of the fifth PM, Boone County, Iowa, as shown in the flat survey record. Are there any written comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. I have resolution thirty-two sixty authorizing the annexation of property described below.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ings.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
And then, D, public hearing on a proposed amendment number ten to the southeast Burn Boone Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Boone, state of Iowa. Are there any written comments?
No written.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. I have a resolution, uh, thirty-two sixty-one determining the area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area.
So moved.
Second. All the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ings.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Kelly. Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
E, public hearing on a proposed South Marshall Urban Renewal Plan for Proposed Urban Renewal Area in the city of Boone, state of Iowa. Are there any written comments?
Yes, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Uh, we have resolution nu- number thirty-two sixty-two determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, uh, and that rehabilitation, conservation, development, uh, is necessary.
I'm a.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ings.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Helsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
F, public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement for a residential project with Prairie Place LLC. Are there any written comments?
I know, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. G, public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement for a commercial project with Prairie Place LLC. Are there any written comments?
Yes, sir.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Hey, I will circle back, number B, updates on the. So.
Um, I'm, so I'm the chair of the. And we need, the new board have been together for about six months at this point, so I just wanted to come and talk a little bit about what we've been up to. Um, so in April, you recall, uh, you approved our, um, application for arts grants in the city. And so I'm really happy to announce we've given out, um, as of July, six grants, literally in twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, which is about half of our fiscal budget that you allow for us each year. Um, we're really excited about the projects that we pick because they have really broad reaching impacts. And we're tracking those and I will continue to report that their impacts so that you can hear about them. Some of our short-term goals were really to become very visible in the city and become a friendly face and to start to really partner with other organizations in town, um, and bring art into the community in a really, um, friendly way. And so we've done that by partnering with the library, with shops on story, with DMAC, um, hosting events, hosting, um, free face painting and temporary tattoos, which the kids went crazy for. Um, and we've also, uh, kicked off a project for a community mosaic, which we're really excited about. So our goal is to have two hundred and eighty-eight small tiles painted and put together in a large installation that the whole community will have contributed to. Uh, we are looking for a home for that. So if anybody has any thoughts, suggestions, ideas, we do have the ability to outdoor proof it. So if that helps, uh, a spine, an idea or a good location, um, just keep an ear out for that. Um, we are about twenty percent complete with that, but we're gonna have it out at Art in the Park, uh, for Pufferbilly Days and we're hoping to make some good progress there. Um, speaking of, that is September twenty-second, so this is your formal invitation to join us out at Art in the Park. It's the Sunday of Pufferbilly Days weekend, we're out there from ten until four. We have over fifty vendors coming, four different food vendors, live music all day, barbecue contest, um, a student art show. So it'll be a great event and we're asking for good, uh, weather this year.
No rain.
Last year it was a torrential downpour. So huge thanks to Andrea and your team for all of the support, kind of working through all the logistics of making all of that happen. They've been very helpful, so thank you for that. Um, our long-term goal is big art installations in town. It also can be expensive, as Siri and I were talking about. And so we're using some of the funds that we're raising through these other projects to help contribute to that. We are working on applying for state grants and other grants so that we can, uh, try to find more money to be able to, uh, fund those efforts. Um, we've already got downtown business owners who are volunteering wall space for murals and things like that. So, uh, lots of support in the community for that as well. So I think that's everything. Is there anything else you would add?
Uh, no, I think we've been a very active group.
Thank you very much. Invitation to the.
Mosaic.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we will move on to number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Yes, uh, please, you can, can you make it over? Are you gonna stand up? It's okay, if you, I know you can speak loud enough for everybody here.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tom Mott, I'm a president of Boone for eighty-four years, former police officer. I want to talk about the safety of the crosswalk, twenty-second and Tama Street. Years back, there was a six-year-old boy came out of a crossing there, hit by a car, drove a half a block through there, died five days later. I witnessed that, that was my brother. That street is not safe at all. I realize we have to have access to the new housing. There should be something maybe more severe in identifying it as a crosswalk as you approach it, particularly coming from the east, going west. It's a farm-to-market road, I sat up there the other day, they don't slow down for that little blinking yellow light. I was up there this afternoon with the sun in it, you can't see the blinking yellow light. And I realized there's a sign a block away from there saying crosswalk ahead or warning. Perhaps there could be a light on that post too, to draw attention. So they realize there, we have to have access for those people to get died for, then I appreciate that, but it's just my concern that, you know, I can still hear the wheels squealing when my brother was killed. And that, that's a, that's a dangerous street. I mean, and I wish and I hope that you folks look into it further and, and come up with some solutions to make it, people more aware of what it is. So, you know, when you're coming from the west, going east, the people live, I was raised right there, the people with that big white house, with the white fence, that's where I grew up. That white fence is there, you can't see people coming up to the crosswalk out of that development because that white fence is in the way. Until they're right to the end of the road, coming from the east to the west, there is visibility because it's open. But still, I sat there and watched them from the east to the west, they just sailed through their, you know, fifty miles an hour. The car that hit my brother was estimated at sixty-five miles an hour. And that was back before we had the amount of traffic we have today. There's a lot more traffic up there and, and we're concerned about a dog attacking a girl and wanting to save her, and I agree with you a hundred percent, the way to handle that. But this is just as bad, let's not let something happen up there. We, if, if at all, we can identify it more visibly to make it safe in some way. So those little kids come out of there in their bicycles, they're not looking, they're pedaling right out on the street, you know? And there's gonna be more of them as that fills up up there. So, thank you for giving me an opportunity here.
Thank you very much.
Probably all of you do a great job.
Can we?
Thank you. If you'd like to add something.
Yeah, can you give suggestions?
I, I think you gave a couple.
Yeah.
Other blinking lights.
The.
The, the, I, one thing, I think the lights all need to be bigger. The little yellow lights up there now is just not visible enough. And perhaps the, the, the warning sign, which is a block away from the crossing before you approach the blinking light.
Right.
Should have some kind of a signaling device on that to draw attention. Hey, look at that sign, there means there's something ahead, you know? Um, I, I don't know, it's a, out of the united community out there and I realize this is not a highway, but they put those flashing lights on, you know, to drop your speed at a certain time when they're going through there. Maybe the speed limit needs to be lowered, it's thirty-five. Seems appropriate to me where it's at, but I suppose the order, you can lower it, but you're still gonna go fifty mile an hour.
Thank you.
Some ideas, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something that we can put on the public safety meetings to talk about? Well, you could talk about some.
Uh, if I could, if we could just have the public works director and the police chief look at it and then they can bring some ideas. And I know they've already talked about lights, the, uh, they would have to be budgeted for.
Hmm.
Those are, uh, quite a little bit of, but there's been that discussion and planning, it just hasn't, you know, we haven't. I don't know if we can put something on the, the first, the first warning sign as well, Wayland?
Yeah, so. Place, I guess, some of our plans, we are out for a grant right now for rapid flashing crossings there. Not to say that, you know, we didn't, we didn't put the initial investment in there, but we've got the request for a grant. Uh, there'd be about, by twenty-six to forty thousand dollars, the flashers, the way things are going. I, I'm gonna guess closer to the four thousand dollar per flashing lights. Um, through the safe, safe streets, if, for all program, the DOT is a lot of, a lot of money this year. I feel really good that we will have a, a project. It may be more than lights, uh, right now it's in the hands of the state engineers, the state Iowa, um, to put something up there. In the meantime, I've got no problem placing another set of flashing lights on the advanced signs and maybe some reflective tape on the posts down to get something going there. Yeah, we're working on that.
Yeah, that's what I, I do. Good. Uh, any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, move to item five, reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration, Williamson. B, Public Safety, Helsbeck.
I report, Your Honor.
C, Utility, Ings.
Uh, we had a, a special meeting last week on Thursday, um, talked about some upcoming projects that, um, are gonna be, have to be done to continue to update and continue to grow as a city. Um, and we'll have more to come on that coming this month as well, so.
D, Economic Development, Mormon.
No report, Your Honor.
Actually, nothing. Nothing.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Six Department reports, uh, building official Dave. Okay. Attorney, Attorney Jim.
No report, Your Honor.
C, Public, uh, Director of Public Works, Wayland.
Real quick, uh, thank you, Your Honor, by the way. Phase two is complete, uh, we made it there. Hopefully in the next week, week we'll see a lot of concrete go, uh, north of the tracks. And the week following, hopefully the paving completes. So I think we're looking right on schedule, pending weather, everything's coming together. And the week following, hopefully the paving completes. So I think we're looking right on schedule. Depending whether everything's coming together.
D, library Jamie. E, park director Mike.
Last meeting, I reported that we sent out RFQs for a pool painting project. And we received six contractors submitted. And they are all but one incomplete. Bid was over budget. We're allowed seventy thousand dollars. The contractor that Perry from S H recommends came in at eighty eight thousand three hundred and sixty six dollars. So with a five thousand dollar lump payment. For his services, that brings us to twenty three thousand three hundred and sixty six dollars before we budget. When Perry and I were doing our walkthrough prior to the official RFQ. We thought, you know, since we're there, let's put in a couple bid of alternates to find out how much it'll cost to. Recock the decking, expansion joints and. Remove the rust and repaint the fence that divides the three pools. And. Each one of those came in. The joint cracks ceiling was eight thousand dollars and altered it to was twenty one thousand dollars. I guess I'm here to request an amendment, whether it be. For the total project of fifty two thousand three hundred and sixty six dollars or at least. But I talked with Bill and Andrea today. They felt they could find the money. Maybe I'll let them tell you where.
Yeah, we had a conversation with Mike. The bid alternates, although they weren't budgeted for in the beginning, we felt it's important that they be done. As, as this is one project rather than bringing them back. That's the reason we're at fifty two thousand and some odd dollars over, but it's a worthwhile project. Last time the pool was painted was two thousand twelve. So we think it's important that we expend the money at this time rather than bring them back. And we'll be fine on the budget amendment and we'll bring that to you in May, April or May.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, the, the pool was slated to be painted for several years now. We had a discussion about this quite some number of years ago and it never got done.
Then again, or the previous time was twenty eighteen.
I think that was, we had the slide painted.
But it's all good stuff that needs to be done with our pool to preserve it.
I think it would even save money, you know, instead of having to go through the process again of more engineering. Reset up, clean up. Put it all in one shot. So that's my request.
Do not need a vote on it at this time. As you said, we'll bring it for budget amendments in the spring. For final approval. He just wanted to inform you and if anybody objected, you certainly could do it.
You needing a recommendation, which one to go with?
Yes, please.
Would you like to go in the direction of doing all the projects at once?
I think maybe do it all if we're gonna do it. I would do it all. Are you okay with that or?
I say.
Do you have money set aside for those filtered?
Uh, we do.
Okay. Cause that's, that project's, that's still on life support, right? Okay.
The whole thing. You know, and I did have a lot of good comments that the pool is in really. Pretty good shape, you know, for as old as it is and all the contractors felt it was a good project.
I don't, yeah, it needs to be done. I don't think that's a problem.
So I think you have your direction.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, recreation director Nate. Thank you. Uh, public safety chief Adams.
Yes, Your Honor. Tonight, just looking for a. Vote to approve the alcohol license for the Puffer Billy Days festivities. Chief Weebel, I will work with Jennifer up there and she's already given us the, really the preliminary map. Everything, nothing will change as far as the boundaries, but just need an official vote on. The yes or no for the alcohol license for Puffer Billy Days.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Weebel.
I report, Your Honor.
Assistant City Administrator Andrea.
Yeah, you will report, Your Honor.
Uh, city administrator Phil.
Thank you, sir. First thing up under my report is resolution three two six three. This is a resident approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement. For residential project. For, with very place out on South Marshall Street. I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the resolution for the development agreement for that project.
So moved. Koho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number two is resolution three two six four. This is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement. For a commercial project, same location out there on South Marshall Street. Commercial. Project like this requires. Two development agreements because one, one is residential, one is development. It affects on. The TIF tax rebates on how they're paid. It's different than the residential, so that's the reason we have two. And I'll answer any questions you have, otherwise I'll take a motion to approve this. Resolution three two six four.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes. Yes.
Koho Kelly.
Okay, item number three. On your desk is a resolution two ninety one that was signed back on the sixteenth day of March nineteen ninety eight. I am asking that council relook at this resolution. And see if we want to continue it. This resolution basically. Waives building fees for any government project. In the city to include the schools, the county, MAC, the hospital and at that time the Boone. Activity Center. I think we've left a lot of dollars on the table by waiving these building fees over the years. If you just take the last. Project school, on that new school, thousands of dollars that we are waiving. If you want to continue it, then we don't need to do anything this. Consider doing something. Basically revoking this resolution. So that we get those dollars. Obviously, it's still, it's a lot of work from the billing office. For the inspections and everything, just like a regular project, right? It's just that it's a government entity and we're passing and we're waiving those fees, leaving those dollars on the table. So.
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, so, you know, the premise of it is that. Dave still has to do all of the work for each of these inspections. And so essentially, we're making sure that he's getting paid for the work that he's doing. And I reached out to what serve I have of other mayors in the state of Iowa. And this is a unique. Or resolution that we have. To put it mildly, other cities do not even this practice. What they do do, however, is. If the city were to find a project worthy of waiving fees as part of a contribution to that project. That's something that they take on a case by case basis rather than a carte blanche. Everything is waived. So that's more of a common practice than what we're seeing. Just for a bit of context. For other cities in the state.
Would we have to design another resolution to have that wording in there or does it just be a case by case basis?
I think that's a good idea.
So three things you can do, ignore it. We continue on, you can table it and think about it, or you could make a motion to revoke resolution number. Two nine one.
I think it's a good idea and I'll make a motion to revoke resolution number two ninety one.
Question? You have something on your mind?
I moved to table it.
Okay, so. We have a motion in seconds. We couldn't do that right now.
Okay. Good to know. I think if we look at it as a case by pace, one, we can decide on that. I said if they're really close on. Making budget on something, we can sure waive it if it's them to make it all feasible.
Can you give us the option to reduce it? Do, or is it just can be waived, one or the other?
Yeah, you could reduce it also.
Do that too?
Yes.
A little more flexible. Yeah. It's just a little more flexible and just saying, you don't have to pay nothing.
Especially on these major projects like ledges. I mean, I'm sure Dave was out there repeatedly doing inspections, so. It takes a lot of his time.
Yeah.
Value of these things.
Right.
Material thing.
Exactly.
That went under reduction. Have a motion in the second. Seems discussion has ceased. We've called the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
My last item is just an informational thing for Main Street. As a reminder to council and staff. That we have a meeting with the Main Street people here at City Hall on September eleventh. From three to four P M. Please plan to attend. In addition, that same day at five thirty to seven thirty, there'll be a public meeting, community conversation about Main Street overview, et cetera. In the auditorium, again, from five thirty to seven thirty. So three to four with staff and council and elected officials. And then the public meeting at five thirty in the auditorium. That's all I have, sir.
Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Okay, eight ordinances, second reading, reading ordinance twenty three oh nine to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the alt rate. And off road vehicles ordinances amending chapter seventy seven.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly. Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
B, waive second reading ordinance twenty three ten to rezone partials described below.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
C, third reading ordinance twenty three ten to rezone partials, property generally described below. From A one to M four and amend the official zoning map.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly. Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes. Yes.
I'm wishing to adopt.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
D, first reading ordinance twenty three eleven for the division of revenues under section forty three, four oh three point one nine code of Iowa. Amendment number ten.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Yes, sorry.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
E, first reading ordinance twenty three twelve for the division of revenues under section forty, four oh three point one nine code of Iowa for the South Marshall Urban Renewal Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Number nine, mayor's comments. I have several updates on different things going on I need to give. Number one, we have a website from ISG with information about the rec complex. So that's, you know, factual information that they put together, posted on his website right now. Inside of that, there's a link to a brochure, a link to an FAQ and things like that. There'll be more information added to that as they formulate it and put it on there. So it's a. A evolving document. In addition to that. There are three scheduled open houses for citizens to get information on the votes beforehand. There are two in person. One is September twenty third from six to seven in the auditorium. The second is September twenty fourth from noon to one in the auditorium. And then the third is a virtual, that is October first at five P M. There is a Teams link on the website, the, the rec complex website that will get you there if you so choose. And so those. Yes, of course. September twenty third, six P M to seven P M. September twenty fourth, noon to one. And October first at five P M.
That's something we can get added to the water bill or not?
Uh, I don't think we.
It is on the website under project.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the website.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and this is not, this is purely information about the project. Not one way or the other. Trying to influence a vote or something like that. This is an informational session, which is why it can be held here in the auditorium. There, additionally, there is a social media page that is operated by the yes committee. And so that is not a government run page, so everybody is aware of that.
And I hope they'll hand out.
Posting it, right?
They will, yeah.
So that we could share it.
Yes, yeah, they would share it there. I'll, I'll also share the, the dates and times on my own social media. Just to make sure everybody's aware of when, when and where it's happening.
Yeah.
I think they'll hand those information sheets out. They've got a, they've got some handouts. They've.
There's pamphlets.
Yes. And they, I went through those. They, they're really well done and they're really informative. I mean, a lot of questions that people have asked. There, they've, they've responded to them.
Yeah. And the history of the project and.
And taxes and how it's gonna, yeah, all of that. It's, it's good.
Okay, and third, the Main Street survey, I believe, is it closed, Jennifer? It's closed, but from our last read on the number of responses we had, it just blew the top off.
How many we have?
Yeah.
And in fact, that, uh, public, uh, evening meeting that they'll refer to, they'll talk about the survey results on that.
Correct. Yeah, the last read, we had over three hundred and three hundred and some change and with a couple of weeks left. A week left.
So did we beat Indianola?
We were beating them at the time.
That's sick question. Yeah, right.
Good. In addition to that, the, the process for hiring Main Street director is on underway. I am on that committee. We have five applicants that made it to the interview phase and those will be conducted next week. And I will report back when decisions are made on that. For anybody that's interested tomorrow morning, I believe it's at nine A M is the Arboretum Treehouse Village ribbon cutting. Not be able to make it because I will be with Jim. That's when they're gonna cut the roof. We have a lot to talk about.
I thought it was at eight.
No.
It's at nine.
Nine A M. Okay.
You'll be early.
Get there early.
Yeah.
Plenty to do and see.
I'm too old to play on that stuff, so.
There's ramps for everybody there.
There you go.
Okay, and.
Wow. Okay.
Can help you.
Okay, that is all that I have. And council member Thomas.
I have a couple of things. We went to coffees and conversations today with the railroad U P. Pretty informative, got a lot of good information there. They turned us on to some grant opportunities. I turned Holly on to that as well for the arts council. So that's exciting. We discussed some. Pretty interesting things about the railroad. So. The big boy train, just so everybody knows, is not stopping in Boone this year. It's stopping in Carroll. Okay, they kind of rotate that around. So they, it won't be here. You might be able to catch a glimpse of it as it goes through, but. Look fast, quick, so. And then our last night's on the green is this coming Friday. Be the last one for the year, so got a great band. And naturally food trucks in. I think we're having a cornhole tournament. A lot of activities from DMAC with the kids, a lot of activities for the kids. So try to make it if you can. So last one, looks like the weather's gonna be really good too, so. Okay. Holly, happy, Your Honor?
I want to say. Did go to the dog night.
I wanna say um, we did go to the dog night for the, at school. Never been, you, he had told me that it was going to happen. Um, what a success. I mean, my gosh. Uh, the place was packed, the dogs were um so well behaved. I mean, I guess I was just so impressed because I thought I, I can't believe you can get that many dogs together and especially after tonight. We, you know, they all got along and uh really, I only saw one dog that was barking. I mean, they were just jumping and having a good time. So what a fun event. I thought that was just a real success. I, it, it, it seemed like it. They were just, they were just all over, so that was fun. Um, the other thing, uh, just to mention that, that uh I think we are uh meeting with the firemen at their fire station and, and uh I just wanted, I just commented and wanted to say, it, it's spotless. I said their floors are cleaner than mine at home. I mean, it, it's really, they do an excellent job of keeping it all, and I even asked if they'd slide down the pole and they did, so I'm sorry, but you know, I wanted the full tour, so it was, it was fun. I enjoyed it.
The other council.
Let's say, I hope you guys can come out to our little mural reveal event on Saturday. It'll be done by two, so if you wanna be someplace specific in front of a TV at two-thirty, gotcha.
Other council comments. Seeing none, uh, you go jump.